Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I want to welcome you to the Thursday, December 10th Citrus Heights Regular City Council Meeting. So if you will all join me, a few of us who are in the audience here stand to and for the flag sleeve.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Van, if you would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Jeff, you're muted.
No, I'm not.
Let me go back from the back.
You can't hear me? Hold on, we're checking. I can hear myself.
That's good now.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we'll have Amy call the roll.
Councilmember Bruins.
Present.
Councilmember Daniels.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Here.
And Mayor Slowey.
Present. If you would read the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. This meeting is closed captioned and livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, December 14th, at 9:00 a.m. on Channel 14.
Thank you, Amy. All right, next item is approval of tonight's agenda. Anybody have any issues with the agenda as presented?
Mayor Slowey, I'd like to ask that the city manager report be moved to right after item seven and before presentations.
Okay.
And I move approval then.
Second.
All right. Vice Mayor Miller makes the motion with the noted moving up of right after seven in the city manager's report. I think I heard both Brett and Jeannie second, so whoever. If we could get a quick roll call, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye. Thank you. All right, a couple of special items centering on the election, et cetera. So first one, proclamation honoring, huh, me, Jeff Slowey, for his service to the city of Citrus Heights. So folks, if you don't know, I chose not to run for reelection. I've been doing this gig for 17 years, and probably in about seven or eight minutes, I will be done. So I know there's a proclamation sitting up front. I'm not going to read it to myself, but I'm sure it says all those wonderful things about my service for the last 17 years.
How would you like it if I read it, Jeff?
Oh, feel free, Mr. Miller.
Okay, I'm gonna read the whole thing, just because I know it'll drive you nuts.
Okay.
Councilmember Slowey began serving the city of Citrus Heights, first as a member of the Citrus Heights Planning Commission in May of 1997. He was appointed a member of the city council on December 19th, 2003, to complete the remaining term of late councilmember William Bill Hughes. And Jeff was subsequently elected to the city council in 2004, 2008, '12, and '16. He served very admirably and honorably as mayor of Citrus Heights for four terms in '07, '12, '17, and 2020. And he has worked, now, I've never heard this word before, so I'm gonna sound it out visiduously, to promote fiscally responsible leadership, safe and secure neighborhoods, and economic growth to benefit Citrus Heights and the surrounding region. During his tenure, Mr. Slowey worked tirelessly with the city council to approve projects enhancing the quality of life for citizens of Citrus Heights, including the widening of Greenback Lane, formation of the Citrus Heights Police Department, construction of the Citrus Heights Community Center, development of Stock Ranch, the rehabilitation of Cyanide Drive, revitalization of Auburn and Sunrise Boulevards, development of the Old Auburn Multi-Use Trail, construction of a new state-of-the-art city hall, approval of the Mitchell Farms Project, and development at the Sunrise Mall, oh, and development of the Sunrise Mall specific plan. Mr. Slowey also diligently represented the city on various boards and commissions, including the Sacramento Area Council of Governments, the Sacramento Public Library Authority, and the Sacramento Regional Transit as my alternate, and thank you, Jeff, I think you filled in for meeting once over the years. And due to your incredible vision, sense of duty, and strong leadership, which is highly appreciated, and your legacy will continue to positively influence all those that live, work, and play in Citrus Heights for many years to come, if not forever, I guess. And so now, therefore, be resolved that the city council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby commend, in the highest regard, the honorable Jeffrey Slowey for his distinguished and devoted service to the city of Citrus Heights and its citizens, and is witnessed and signed by myself, Councilmember Bruins, Councilmember Daniels, and Councilmember Portia Middleton. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
I think we've got some flowers there for your lovely wife.
Yep, I'll take them home to her, yeah, thanks. It's been a great run for 17 years, but it's also time for others to take over, so thanks for reading that, Steve, appreciate it.
My pleasure.
All righty. Next item, Amy.
The next item is certification of the November 3rd, 2020 general municipal election results, and the recommendation is to adopt a resolution reciting the fact of the municipal election held on November 3rd, 2020, and declaring the result and other such matters as provided by law. And pursuant to Elections Code, the city council as the governing body shall adopt a resolution reciting the fact. As a result of the election, the following council members have been elected to the city council for full four-year terms. City Council District One Brett Daniels, City Council District Three Tim Schaefer. And the city council as the governing body also declares the results for each measure voted on at a municipal election. And as a result of the election, Measure M did not pass. And with that, if there are any questions.
All right, so no outstanding lawsuits looking to overturn the election results here in Citrus Heights, we're all good there? All right, what's the pleasure of the council?
If you will.
Second.
So Councilmember Bruins makes the motion, Councilmember Middleton seconds it. Amy, if we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
And Mayor Slowey.
Aye, motion passes, five zero. So now, I know both Councilmember Bruins and Councilmember-elect are here. So Amy, I'm gonna let you.
Yeah, so the oaths of office will be administered by myself, the city clerk, to City Council District One, Councilmember-elect Brett Daniels first, then immediately followed by City Council District Three, Councilmember-elect Tim Schaefer. So with that, if you want to come down.
Come down there.
I state your name and repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
I, Brett Daniels, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, is the microphone. Sorry about that, let's start over again. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Brett Daniels, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
You're gonna have to do that one over.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental.
Reservation.
Reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Councilmember-elect Tim Schaefer. If you could please say aye, please state your name and repeat after me. Do solemnly swear.
I, Tim Schaefer, do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
To the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And I will well.
And faithfully.
And faithfully discharge the duties of the office I'm about to enter.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Brett and Tim. I don't think any of us got through the oath of office perfectly ever. And with that, Jeff handed me the gavel to run the next part of the meeting, so as soon as Amy gets settled in, I'll have her call the next item.
The next item is number six, swearing in of newly-elected councilmember, or, I mean, sorry, selection of mayor and vice mayor.
Okay, I think typically, do we start with mayor?
Yes.
I nominate Steve Miller to serve as mayor.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion by Jeannie Bruins, seconded by Portia Middleton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
No.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
No.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
The motion carries three-two, so I guess I'll do a few more items. Selection of vice mayor.
I nominate Portia Middleton.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
No.
Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
No.
And Mayor Miller.
Okay, so that passes three-two as well. And on to the next item, please, which I believe is city manager report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. I just wanted, obviously, the significant news continues to be COVID. There's been changes in degree of severity and what's occurred as recently as yesterday. And so I just wanted to talk for a minute about that. As we all know, the ICU bed capacity is decreasing across the state, and as a result, the governor has, and his health team, have taken some different actions. Additional restrictions go into effect for regions with less than 15% ICU bed availability. In our briefings with the county health department, we've learned we haven't reached the peak of the pandemic yet. In some instances, they are seeing more than 1,000 new cases in one day, and we know, are told, about 20% of those cases will require hospitalization. There are about 46,500 confirmed cases in Sacramento County, little over 2,100 of those in Citrus Heights, 659 deaths in Sacramento County, 27 of those in Citrus Heights. As of yesterday, the greater Sacramento region dropped below the ICU bed threshold and currently sits at about 13.3%. Because of this, Citrus Heights and the entire region will be under additional restrictions as of midnight tonight. We know the situation developed quickly. One week ago, the region was measuring at 24% bed availability, only to drop more than 10% to 13% in seven days. This data shows how aggressively this pandemic is spreading, and what an impact it is to our healthcare system. The restrictions, we are told, will last for a minimum of three weeks, in which time the state will assess the region's status. The new restrictions will prohibit private gatherings of any size, closed-sector operations except for critical infrastructure and retail, and require 100% masking and physical distancing in all others. There's, of course, industry-specific guidance available from Sacramento County. While talking about limited ICU bed space is sobering, I want to assure the community that for the city, operations will remain largely unchanged. We remain committed to communicating early and often with our businesses and residents to educate and inform regarding any new county requirements. I think the council knows that we've been required to take, you know, aggressive, really, action as an employer with regards to being a large employer with a lot of employees and having facilities. We have those policies and practices in place as is required. The way the laws have been passed, as an employer, we bear tremendous burden and liability on how we take care of our employees and the procedures that we take in place. The most recent policy we were required to add as recently as yesterday was mask-wearing inside all of our facilities at all times unless in a closed office with the door shut. So that went out to our staff effective today. I want to thank our community for how you've handled this difficult situation. I know with our continued commitment to safety, we'll weather this latest surge just as we've done before. We are all in this together. So city staff is monitoring the situation daily. I'll keep the council updated on any new developments, but for now, our operations will largely stay the same in this new normal. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris, I forgot, I was running the meeting. With that, let's go to presentations, Amy.
Our first presentation tonight is presentation number eight, employee service recognition.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Can you hear me okay? Okay, tonight we have a brief presentation for you where we'll be recognizing individual employees who have reached a milestone, either their five, 10, 15, or 20 years of service with the city of Citrus Heights. You may recall that we honored eight employees who had reached their milestone from the period of January 2020 to June of 2020. So tonight, we're back to recognize employees that have reached their anniversary service from the period of July 2020 to December 2020. And at the end of our presentation, we'll take a look at all of the employees who have celebrated their anniversary this year. So pre-COVID, we would have celebrated this honor at our annual employee holiday luncheon, but because we can't be together due to COVID, we have invited the employees that will be recognized tonight to attend virtually and be recognized by their directors. So at this point, I will turn it over to the city manager, so he can pick it up for us.
Yes, thank you. This has been a great program, and so pleased to honor our employees for their years of service. So first up, though, I do have the pleasure of recognizing for 15 years of service with the city, Mayor Miller. The mayor was appointed on December 13th in 2005 to fill a vacancy on the city council, and elected in 2006, and reelected in 2010, '14, and '18. He served as mayor in 2008, '13, and vice mayor in '19, and '20, and now, as we just saw, mayor again. He currently represents the city on Sacramento Regional Transit Board of Directors, served as chairman in 2010. He's director for the Capitol Court, or GPA, and a U.S. Army Rhino Battalion Community Relations Advisory Board member. And over the years, he's represented the city on the Sacramento Area Council of Governments Board, Sacramento Regional Sanitation, Sacramento County Library Board, and Metropolitan Cable-TV Commission. During his tenure, he was instrumental leader in starting the Citrus Heights Police Department, and the community center, and the city hall as well. In February of 2018, he introduced Smart Ride to Citrus Heights, a citywide door-to-door on-demand transit service that has now grown in popularity throughout the region and the nation. His innovative thinking and unwavering commitment to the community's quality of life has earned him unequivocal support and respect, both locally and regionally. His continued efforts and outstanding leadership speak volumes that have been instrumental in the success of the city. So Mayor, thank you, and congratulations on 15 years.
Unbelievable it's been that long, thank you, Chris.
All right, next, please join us in celebrating Regina Cave's 20th year with the city. Regina continues to be an invaluable asset to our leadership team. She joined the city as an office assistant in 2000, and rising in ranks over those years, becoming operations manager in 2017. She excels at making the most out of our capital improvement program every year, and her vast knowledge of transportation funding and priorities are an invaluable asset as we advocate for Citrus Heights' share of transportation dollars. She's highly respected in the region. She's a leader in a professional group, particularly APWA, where she was recognized as Professional Manager of the Year in Administrative Management. Through her work in both national and regional APWA offices, she's been a staunch advocate for the recognition of public works professionals as first responders and critical services providers. Regina, thank you, I'm not sure as you're here, you might have been traveling, but we all know Regina, and thank her for all of her contributions to the team. Congratulations on 20 years. I am still up, and I have the pleasure of recognizing Leslie Blumquist for her fifth year with the city. As you know, she was recently promoted to the city engineer. She joined the city in 2015 as a traffic and signal operations supervisor, and as we've said, we recently celebrated her promotion. She's played very important roles in many of our major projects, most recently including Electric Greenway Trail Project and the Old Auburn Complete Streets Plan. Already known for her high-quality work in the city, she's been recognized by the Sacramento Business Journal as one of its 40 Under-40 awardees for 2020. She's brought fresh, innovative, successful ideas to Citrus Heights, not only securing grants for projects, but developing projects that will benefit our community, our businesses, and residents for many generations. So fortunate to have her and her talent and her leadership. So Leslie, congratulations to you on five years with the city, and I do believe she is here. Do you want to give a wave?
Thank you very much.
All right, with that, I'm going to, absolutely, I'm gonna turn it over to, I believe, Chief Building Inspector Greg Anderson for the next employee.
I actually think Colleen's gonna present this one.
You got me?
Do you hear it?
Yeah, it's Greg's gonna do it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, Greg Anderson, chief building official, thank you, Chris. So yes, Kelly Chitigian is celebrating her five years of service with the city of Citrus Heights. She started with us in 2015 as Development Services Technician One with the Building Division. In 2017, she was promoted to Development Services Technician Two. Kelly has been instrumental in the development and successful implementation of our evolving citizen access portal, our online permitting program, and file retention programs. Kelly's taken the lead in multiple high-profile projects with the city, such as the Dignity Health Medical Office Building, Quantum Care Memory Care Facility, and our current Mitchell Farms Residential Development that's in process as we speak. Recently, Kelly obtained professional certification through the International Code Council as an ICC-certified permit technician. This is a big accomplishment. She also maintains current memberships in multiple professional organizations such as International Code Council, the California Building Officials Association, and the Sacramento Valley Association of Building Officials. And she participates and is in the NorCal Permit Technicians. Kelly continues to provide exceptional customer service to our customers, and she maintains constant professional relationships with all, and is well-respected by her peers. She continues to be an invaluable asset to the building division and the city as a whole. Thank you, Kelly, for your five years of dedicated service, it is a pleasure working with you.
And here is the individual employees who have celebrated a milestone over the period of 2020. As you remember, we recognized several of them back in June, and we just want to congratulate all of them and thank you for their service. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much, and congratulations on everybody's anniversaries. Next item, please, Amy.
The next item is a proclamation for National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And so I will bring up my screen here with the proclamation that the mayor can present. And we have invited Alfred Sanchez here with us tonight, who's also able to accept the proclamation and speak as soon as the mayor has read the proclamation.
There it is. This proclamation by the city of Citrus Heights proclaims December 21st, 2020, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. Whereas December 21st, 2020 marks the first day of winter and is the longest night of the year, the Coalition for the Homeless and the National Healthcare for the Homeless Council have designated December 21st, 2020, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. And hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious challenge for many citizens who have the need or the right to adequate food, housing, clothing, safety, and healthcare. And homelessness raises one's risk of illness, injury, and even death. The city of Citrus Heights therefore encourages its citizens to join together in remembering our neighbors. We can honor their lives by working to provide solutions to end homelessness within our city. And in this season of generosity and sharing, citizens of Citrus Heights are encouraged to commit themselves to promoting compassion and concern for all, especially those who are in need and homeless. So now, therefore, be it resolved, the city council of the city of Citrus Heights does hereby proclaim December 21st, 2020, as National Homeless Persons Memorial Day, and ask all citizens to remember those who have died homeless, and encourage our citizens to support all local efforts to eliminate homelessness in our community. And we have signed this today, December 10th, 2020. And with that, I'd like to ask Alfred Sanchez to accept this proclamation, and if you'd like to say a few words, Alfred, we're more than glad to have you do that, and also tell us your nickname.
Go ahead, Alfred.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. First of all, my nickname on the streets, they call me a, they call me a snack man of Citrus Heights. It started several years ago by handing out snacks, but today is not about me. I'd like to thank the city for signing this proclamation, making it National Homeless Persons Memorial Day. I would like to thank every activist, nonprofit, donor, church, volunteer, people that commit uh. I would like to thank every activist, nonprofit, donor, church, volunteer, people that commit acts of random kindness, the guy that buys a homeless person a cheeseburger on the street. I want to thank each and every one of you personally. On a more personal note, I'm proud that my grandchildren will continue to march for years and continue to raise awareness of homelessness because of this proclamation. The thought of people dying on the streets is very emotional for me, for obvious reasons. I'm out there every day. And I've left snacks and provisions for people that aren't prepared for the weather, whether they got their things stolen or what, and actually made a mental note of what they looked like, so when I come back the next day, I can see whether or not they froze to death. With this proclamation, we stand together as a city and we say that you will never be forgotten. We also reflect on the hardships of being homeless, appropriately enough, on the longest night, winter solstice. Once again, thank you.
Thank you, Alfred. Thank you for all you do. I think that's key. You know, we're all inclined to hand some cash. I don't know that that goes to the right places. If you've got coupons for food or even food, or like Alfred does, he leaves snacks around, those are things that are needed, toiletries, those kind of things. So again, thank you for all your efforts, Alfred, and we will continue to work on helping folks out of the death spiral of homelessness. Thank you. And next item is comments by council members and regional board updates. I'm going to start with Councilmember Bruins. What have you been up to lately?
So I attended the Sunrise Marketplace Board Meeting last week along with Councilmember Middleton. And the big news from that meeting is the fact that the S&amp;P Board did vote to move forward with their efforts to renew the bid. We're going to enter into a three-year contract with them as the management company to take it forward and then go from there. So this has been a challenging year this year with COVID and all the other things that have come up. So I'm very pleased to report that that's moving forward. And I'd just like to honor our police department tonight. You know, they have put on this Miracle on Fountain Square Drive event, in large part on the great amount of positive adrenaline they got from putting on their reverse trunk retreat event for Halloween for the children of our community, the families of our community. And then once again, they've pulled out all stops and have done a wonderful job. And so on top of everything else that they do, I just want to say hats off to them and just a hearty word of thanks for reaching out to our community and making tonight special. That's it. You're muted, Steve.
Thank you. Next, Councilmember Daniels, what are you up to?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I attended the Miracle on Fountain Square a little earlier tonight, and wow, what a show. You know, you could tell a whole lot of effort went into that, a whole lot of heart went into it, and they did a bang-up job. So thank you very much to those folks. Lots of things going on in regards to COVID, but you know, we're going to be put into this lockdown as of tonight, but you know, find a way to support. Our local businesses still need your help, our restaurants still need your help, and I'm very concerned, but I'm hoping that they can survive this unnecessary and misdirected effort. You know, Citrus Heights, if they put us into our own tier or color, or whatever you want to call it, we'd be in the orange. And because we're part of Sacramento County, though, we're locked down also, and it's just not right. I do want to touch on the election a little bit by saying thank you to everybody that voted. Voting in America is sacred and should not be taken lightly, and it shouldn't be abused. I want to thank those that supported me. But even more so, I want to especially thank those that supported our new Councilmember, Tim Schaefer. I think Tim will be a tremendous asset to the city of Citrus Heights, and I'm very proud to have him up here. The last four years have been a wild ride of adventure, disappointment, hope, and concern, but with the last one carrying too much sadness with the negative impacts of COVID-19 and the responses to it. But my hope is that the next four years will be a wild ride of success with the ending of our revenue neutrality extortion payment to the county, hopefully a successful resolution to our budget issues, the exploration of maybe some bold ideas such as annexing the Roseville Point neighborhood, possibly exploring creating our own parks district, possibly exploring creating our own school district, finalizing the revitalization of the Sunrise Mall property, and last but not least, painting the fence that runs down the middle of Greenback Lane. We've got to do something about that. So I'm convinced that the city of Citrus Heights as it exists today will be markedly different four years from today. And I'm honored and humbled to be chosen by the citizens of Citrus Heights to be a part of that transformation. I really do thank you from the bottom of my heart, and hold on, it's going to be a wild one. Thank you.
Our newest Councilmember, Tim Schaefer. Anything? Any announcements?
Well, yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to say this, very similar comments as Brett did. I'm grateful and humbled that I've been elected and that I will dedicate myself to making Citrus Heights a better place to live. I think there's some really positive things on our horizon. It is while we kind of get consumed with what's right in front of us, which is COVID, that will be over soon. I can see that come the spring and early summer, COVID will be a distant memory, and it's time to recover. It's time to count our blessings and realize that we're all still here and that we all contribute to each other's happiness and success. One thing I do want to recognize, and I know we spoke about him earlier, Alfred Sanchez, you're doing a wonderful job out there. The volunteering that you're doing, the support that you're doing for our homeless, it is, it really is phenomenal. And I look forward to hearing your comments and how we can help. You know, as we had a small meeting before, and we talked about what everybody wants. City of Citrus Heights, the citizens of Citrus Heights, they want the homeless to be housed. And how do we achieve that goal? That's what we should be all working towards. And everybody's got their own story, everybody kind of knows mine. I have an older brother that is chronically homeless, and it is, it's something that we all have to work on. I don't think there's any silver bullet here. We've just got to keep our nose to the grindstone and keep working on it. So thank you very much. Look forward to talking more, two or one here. Thank you.
Next, Vice Mayor Middleton.
Yes, so way back November 23, I actually attended the League of California Cities Sacramento Valley Division Board of Directors Meeting, and I decided that it was time for me to become a bit more involved with our city and representation. And I ran to be the Division Board Secretary and was elected to take on that responsibility. So I'm looking forward to making sure that I'm attending those monthly meetings and reporting back to you all exactly what's going on in our county, in our region.
Thank you. Haven't attended a regional transit meeting in a while. We have on Monday, but the message from regional transit today was no mask, no ride, so that speaks for itself. We had an STA meeting this afternoon, and we appointed the new Executive Director, Sabrina Drago. She comes from the private sector and looking forward to her taking the reins. This was Will Kempton's last meeting. We did approve a $10.7 million allotment for early allocation for senior and disabled transportation services to SAC RT and Parat Transit. These are funds dedicated to just that, and they've just been in savings, gaining a small amount of interest or whatever. And so the board voted to spend some money on transportation for senior and disabled. And back to RT, they are still running regular routes, so check with their website or whatever. You know there's a drop in ridership because people aren't committing to work, but it is an essential service to those who can't drive and need transit to get around. And that's really all I have to report on. A little sad I missed the Miracle on Fountain Square Drive. Nan drove through there, so I'm sure I'll see some pictures, but shout out to our police department for putting that on this year. And with that, we can move on to public comment. Amy?
Members of the public may address the council on any item of interest to the public and within the council's purview, or on any agenda item before or during the council's consideration of the item. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. If you wish to address the council during the Zoom meeting, please use the raise hand function or star nine from a telephone to indicate your desire to speak. When your name is called, I will allow you to unmute your microphone to speak. And Mayor, I do have one raised hand. Gus, oh, I apologize on the last name, but I can allow him to speak first, and then I do have one written comment. Gus, you can go ahead and speak now.
All right, sorry about that. I finally found the microphone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, it's a pleasure to be here today. I don't know if you can see me, but I just wanted to make an announcement for this Saturday. We are ARI, which stands for Asian Resources Incorporated. Some of our services go out to the community of Citrus Heights for the aging and disenfranchised community members. We offer services such as free tax preparation, cover California enrollment, COVID-19 resources, how to prevent it, and also assistance for employers through the CARES Act as well. So we're excited, ARI is excited with partnership with Dignity Health to announce that this Saturday, December 12, we are offering a drive-through flu shot event. This is free for anyone in the community. We look forward to serving the community of Citrus Heights, and our address is 5750 Sunrise Boulevard, Citrus Heights, California 95610. For further information, you can always give me a call or give us a call at 916-745-4313. Also want to thank the mayor. I know that this is the last day, and also Vice Mayor and City Council members for all of your support. We really do appreciate it, and we look forward to continuing servicing the Citrus Heights community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gus. We appreciate everything you do. I don't know that you mentioned that you also provide Meals on Wheels for seniors too, and we're grateful for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, we have one written public comment that I will now read, and it was received from Joan Whitaker. And she states, "About 10 years ago, I met Tim Schaefer at an Area 5 neighborhood meeting. One thing he said at the meeting was if anyone in the neighborhood needs help moving items, I have a truck and I am willing to help. Then he gave his phone number out. I was impressed with his giving attitude. Later on, I heard how put his words into actions when some neighbors called upon him. I too had some occasions to ask for assistance, and Tim gladly helped. As part of the Pona neighborhood, Tim and some others thought up a float theme for the red, white, and blue parade. We worked in Tim's side yard to decorate the float. That year, we won an award. Tim has done a lot to strengthen our neighborhood by helping people and being an example of what a good neighbor is like. At our neighborhood meetings, Tim listened to neighborhood concerns and opinions. He drew his own conclusions from listening to others. He will also do this when representing us on the city council. Tim has been an asset to the neighborhood, and I know he will be an asset to the city." And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. So now let's get to work. Next item, please.
Next item is consent calendar items 10, 11, 12, 14, and 15.
Move approval?
Second. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Motion by Daniels, or was that Tim? I can't tell.
It was Brett.
So Councilmember?
Because it helps if you say your name when you make a motion if I can't see on the screen and...
It was Brett.
Okay, thank you, Brett.
No problem.
Motion by Daniels, second by Bruins. Roll call, please.
Middleton.
Middleton, yeah.
I can see you, but I sound like you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye. All right. The consent calendar passes 5-0, and with that, we're into public hearings. Next item, please.
Public hearing number 16. The subject is administrative modification to the city's permanent local housing allocation funding application. The recommendation is to conduct the public hearing and then adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of the city's permanent local housing allocation funding application and accepting the funds pursuant to certain terms and conditions.
Good evening, Mayor Miller, Vice Mayor Middleton, Stephanie Quater, Community Development Department. Let me start this. There we go. So as Amy said, tonight I'm here to discuss an administrative modification to the city's permanent local housing allocation application that was already approved by you. This is required to have a public hearing because of the state requires it, and nothing has changed substantively. It's just a minor modification, and it is required for us to resubmit our application to the state in receipt funding. So a little background, it's been a little while. Back in June, we started discussing this. We had a study session. We developed a draft plan, and we put it out for a public review and comment period. The city council approved the city's application and five-year plan on July 9. We submitted the application to the state. The state accepted our application, but asked us to add some additional language to our resolution. So that's what we're here tonight to ask you to do. So this is authorized by SB 2. It's a real estate transaction fee that is a new permanent source of funding for the city. It'll result in about $376,000 per year in funding for the city to spend on things like affordable housing and homeless services. The application includes funding percentages and broad descriptions of activities. The specific projects can really be fine-tuned in future years, and changes for funding amounts and activities can be made pretty easily by council resolution. To remind you, the activities that are approved in our plan include pre-development work and maybe some development work for Sayonara. Planning is also developing some ADU projects that we thought might be a good fit here. The Citrus Heights Navigator Program, putting some funding into that, and also moving the money that currently goes to general fund to this funding source instead. So the navigator would be funded by PLHA and CDBG funds only. We also discussed in future years using this for our first-time homebuyer program because we can fund some homebuyers that are at a bit of an increased income level than we can with our other funds. So this is the administrative modification that we need to make to the resolution. It basically says that the city will sub-grant some of its funds to someone else as part of our activities. So for example, as part of the Sayonara project, we might award funds to somebody to help us with housing development. It's pretty simple, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. As I said, there's been no changes to the actual plan that you have approved. And the staff recommendations are on the screen, but I'm happy to take any questions as well.
Before I open the public hearing, are there any questions from council?
No, basically, this is something we do every year. Is that correct, Stephanie?
Yeah, we will be. This is the first year. Hopefully, the process will be a little smoother next year. Sorry, we have to bring it back. It'll be easier. This is the, every five years, we'll kind of have to do a bigger process, and then each year, we can just make modifications as we go.
This is the result of SB, I thought, is it SB2 or SB1?
Correct, SB2.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open the public hearing.
And I- I do not have, I do not see any raised hands, and I do not have any written public comment.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion, please.
Move approval? Ask for a decision.
Second, Middleton.
Okay, motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye.
All right, thanks, Stephanie. On to the next public hearing.
Our next public hearing, number 17, is adoption of the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice Report. Again, the recommendation is to conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution adopting the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice for the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Mayor Miller, sorry, you can't get rid of me that quickly. One more item, then I'm done.
All right, thanks.
So this is another CDBG-related item. It's the Analysis of Impediments, otherwise referred to as the AI report. It is required by HUD of all CDBG recipients, which the city has won. The AI is a plan that really helps local governments and public housing agencies to take meaningful actions regarding overcoming historic patterns of segregation, promoting fair housing choice, and fostering inclusionary communities that are free from discrimination. The goal of the AI report is really to inform communities, help them analyze challenges to fair housing choice, establish broad goals and priorities to address fair housing barriers. The data and findings from this report will be used to develop the city's future CDBG action plans and consolidated plans and other of the city's documents that relate to this. The city used a regional approach to the AI report, which is recommended by HUD. Fair housing issues are often not constrained by jurisdictional boundaries, so it really makes sense to look at it together. And it's also a lot more cost-effective, so we saved a lot of money combining efforts. The Sacramento Valley AI report covers a number of cities. I won't list them all, but you can see them there. It also covered Sacramento County and a number of local housing authorities. There was a robust period of community engagement, luckily pre-COVID, that went on as part of this report. It included focus groups with residents and stakeholders, pop-up engagements, and a resident survey as well. They part groups, which is the group that did the group policy, did the report. They partnered with all of the jurisdictions that participated, as well as nonprofit organizations throughout the region to identify the residents and stakeholders in order to get them to participate in focus groups. And then they followed that up with in-depth interviews where possible. A total of 35 stakeholders and 80 residents participated in the focus groups. These were all different stakeholders, from people who work in housing, education, to economic development. It was a really wide range of people that they received feedback from. 577 residents participated in the engagement activities, and over 3,000 participants submitted a resident survey that was offered in a number of languages. So now I'm going to present the main findings. The Analysis of Demographics, Disproportionate Housing Needs, Access to Opportunity, Disability, and Community Engagement yielded the following primary findings. The first was segregation and integration. So segregation and lack of access to economic opportunities still persist in many areas of the region, both within and across jurisdictions. It's not something that's unique to Citrus Heights. Although the region has gotten a lot more diverse, there's still effects of past systemic segregation and exclusion in housing still disproportionately impacts protected classes. So access to opportunity varies a lot. Some examples and the differences of access to opportunity that are seen among jurisdictions within the Sacramento Valley include, with the exception of a few school districts, there's a real disparity in the school quality between lower and higher-income neighborhoods. These differences disproportionately impact people of color. The resident survey respondents living in Sacramento, in Sacramento County tended to have the lowest ratings of healthy neighborhood indicators. And public transportation issues were also an issue that was identified. It was a concern among residents throughout the region. The fair housing barriers and factors are pretty wide-ranging. It includes the harm caused by segregation. This creates disproportionate housing needs and differences in economic opportunity. The affordable rental options in the region are increasingly limited as our population continues to grow. Residents with disabilities really lack access to affordable and accessible housing. Strict rental policies limit options. Disparities in the ability to access homeownership exist, and the city does address this with our programs. Public transportation has not kept up with growth, although there are differences in the different jurisdictions. As I mentioned, educational inequities, disparities in the labor market engagement. Residents with disabilities also lack access to supportive services and housing options to enable them to achieve and maintain housing stability. So the solutions that we came up with to address these contributing factors include increasing homeownership rates among the underrepresented groups, expanding affordable rental opportunities, and focusing on a range of equity issues and accessing opportunity. The Sacramento Valley AI goals are broad, and they're meant to really be able to adapt to each jurisdiction's unique needs. They include incentivizing and increasing opportunity for development and continued availability of affordable homeownership products, expanding and preserving affordable rental opportunities, and expanding equity in access to economic opportunities. So as I said, each participating partner will take these strategies and incorporate them into future planning efforts as applicable. I'm happy to take any questions, and the recommendation is on your screen for your consideration.
A question?
Questions? Jeannie?
Yes, thank you. So I don't recall us having to do this before. Is this a new requirement for HCD, or am I just not remembering?
It's not new, but it was a really long time ago. I believe the last one we did was in 2011. So it's something that doesn't come very often, and it also has been changed a little bit. It was going to be an assessment of fair housing, and then they changed it to the Analysis of Impediments. So it has grown.
Okay, I guess maybe the verbiage terminology is different. Because I don't-
They have made some changes, yeah.
And it's a requirement to get the funding, correct?
Yes, this is correct. We have to have one, an updated AI, in order to get funding.
And so do they just randomly decide when to update it again, or is it every nine years, or every?
Um-
If you did last year in 2011, it's been nine years, so.
Yeah, they don't really have a set timeframe. It's generally with the consolidated planning period that we do it, and the con-plan is about every five years. But it just kind of depends if there are, sometimes there are certain conditions that you don't need to update it. But this time, it was required of us in order to submit our con-plan.
Thank you.
Mayor, a comment. It's Brett. So I want to make sure that the listener at home, or whoever, is definitely clear that a lot of that negative stuff that was mentioned comes from this as a regional effort, a regional report, and that those things mentioned aren't necessarily an issue in Citrus Heights. And in skimming through this report, which seemed to be about 10,000 pages or so, but it was huge. It did have stuff that addressed areas such as Citrus Heights specifically, too. And I hope what we do is that we don't get drawn into trying to respond to a problem that's somewhere else with our funds when it should be spent on actual issues of Citrus Heights. So I hope we're very careful with that. And I do remember, I think it was from this report, that one area that it did point out in Citrus Heights was the, and I can't remember the words, so forgive me, but the underperforming aspect of schools in Citrus Heights. So I'm hoping that we can pay attention to that stuff and that, again, that our efforts are focused into what are actually the issues of Citrus Heights. That's it.
That's a really good point. I do want to just bring to your attention that there were a lot of positive things about Citrus Heights. You're absolutely right. And the school district was one of the, was one of the issues that they did identify. And this report is really to dig into, you know, the issues and the barriers, and so we can figure out how to make those better. But it is on a regional level, and it isn't all specific to Citrus Heights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions before I open the public hearing? Hearing none. Open the public hearing.
And Mayor, I do not see any raised hands, and I do not have any written public comment.
Thank you. Then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move approval.
Second, Middleton.
Motion by Bruins, second by Middleton. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye.
The next item is regular calendar, item number 18. The subject is Adopt Multimodal Transportation Safety Program. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the multimodal transportation safety program.
Thank you, Amy. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here, pull up the presentation. Good evening, Mayor Miller and members of the city council. Mary Cole with the General Services Department. I am here tonight with Leslie Blumquist, our city engineer, and Ian Conway of Steer, our consulting team on the project. Tonight, we are here to present the final Multimodal Transportation Safety Program, or MMTSP, program document, and request city council approval. The MMTSP guide has been developed with grant funding over the past 16 months with a mission to create a community-driven, transparent, and equitable process for receiving, ranking, and prioritizing neighborhood traffic calming requests. Tonight's presentation is a direct follow-up to the more extensive study session that we held on November 12th, where we spent a fair amount of time reviewing the history of the project, the extensive community involvement throughout the program development, and we walked through the prioritization methodology in more detail. The focus for tonight, however, is on the program document and requesting city council approval. So staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution adopting the Multimodal Transportation Safety Program. I'll just take a moment to revisit the background and history of how this all started. Each year, the city receives a large number of requests for neighborhood traffic safety improvements. At the same time, there are limited resources available to address them all. In 2001, the city adopted the current Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, which identifies countermeasures to be considered based on specific conditions. Since then, traffic calming countermeasures and industry standards have improved and expanded to include all modes of transportation. Therefore, we applied for and received a Caltrans planning grant to update the old program, incorporate the new and improved countermeasures, and develop a prioritization methodology and a prioritization tool. In addition to these items, the grant also provided funding to develop a toolkit for resident and staff use alike. This slide shows the number of neighborhood traffic calming requests received by the city each year. As you can see, the number continues to grow, indicating that there is an increasing demand for neighborhood-level transportation safety improvements. However, funding is extremely limited for infrastructure improvements, as well as the ongoing maintenance costs for local street improvements and infrastructure that's already on the ground. The scope of work for the project included the following program goals: to identify safety patterns, trends, and hotspots and appropriate solutions; to engage the community; to develop the prioritization methodology and tool; to evaluate and prioritize past resident concerns and requests; to identify potential funding sources for implementing these solutions; and to provide a toolbox and program guidelines for the community and staff to use. The intended result is a process that allows the city to quickly respond to citizen requests, identify solutions, and prioritize implementation. The MMTSP has been in development over the past 16 months, as I mentioned before, through a process that combines resident input and priorities with a review of requests that have been submitted to date and an evaluation of what's happening on the ground through data collection and analysis. To get to this point, we've had three public workshops, multiple walkshops or neighborhood field trips conducted by community champions, an online survey to identify community preferences, which helped to frame the methodology behind the prioritization tool, and most recently, a city council study session was held on November 12th to obtain feedback in any final council direction before returning with the program for formal adoption, which is slated for tonight. And then the public launch is intended to be in early spring of 2021. Next, Ian and I will walk through the MMTSP program guide document, and I would just like to note that the full MMTSP guide is attached to the Stafford Report for reference. The MMTSP guide is a comprehensive guidance document that summarizes the MMTSP process and will be a resource for the city and the community. The guide includes four sections covering an introduction and background on the program development, a discussion of the prioritization process, a section on how requests are submitted and tracked, and a toolbox that includes a discussion of non-physical countermeasures, including encouragement and community resources, as well as enforcement. The guide also includes a section explaining different types of physical countermeasures, along with detailed information sheets for each in the appendix. In the introduction section, there's a description of the MMTSP, an overview of the goals, a summary of how the program was developed. And in addition, the first section recognizes that while we expect that arterial streets will surface as priority locations as concerns are submitted, issues along arterial corridors will be channeled into larger infrastructure projects through the Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, and through the budget process. The MMTSP prioritization tool is focused on neighborhood collectors and residential streets. The importance of community engagement all through the program development is also covered in this section, including the concept of community champions, which I will talk about a little bit more later. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ian to walk us through Section 2. Now I'm going to turn it over to Ian to walk us through Section 2, which covers the prioritization process.
All right. Thank you, Mary. So I'm going to take you briefly through the prioritization process that's really at the core of this program. Now, the whole prioritization process is detailed in the MMTSP program guide. It's a whole section of that guide, and it includes an overview. It includes information on community preferences. And then Step 1 and Step 2 here are really the core of the actual prioritization tool itself. There's also then a section on implementation and reporting. Now, I just want to quickly go through some of the key program inputs. So starting with existing citizen requests at the 9 o'clock position and then kind of moving through clockwise. So existing citizen requests, so we examined these, and it gave us a really good understanding of current safety issues in the city. We did a community survey earlier this year where we had 352 responses, which was an absolutely fantastic response rate and really revealed preferences of the community towards street safety. We held three community workshops. We did a system-wide traffic safety analysis, and we also looked at previously adopted plans. Now, this is where things start to get a little bit more detailed. So this prioritization process is basically split into two steps. First of all, you have prioritization, where you're taking roughly something in the order of 1,000 requests that have come in from the community, and we're running an automated process that will rank these requests and give us a tranche of high-priority requests, which we then look at in more detail under Step 2 Evaluation. And we do an engineering assessment, and the outcome is a small set of requests that will go forward for funding and implementation. Now, just looking in a little bit more detail at prioritization process, you have these requests coming in from the community, and they could be received over the phone, in person, or through the website. Now, when a request comes in, we know the issue types, or whether it's kind of speeding or something else. And we also know the location of that request, and we can use that information to look at the, look at what we call context criteria. So things like, for that request location, is it on a street with a bike lane? Is it close to a school? And then we can score each of these different requests that have come in and create a prioritized list and a map of the requests. So this table just, it's from the actual guide itself, and it just shows you what the different criteria are in this prioritization tool. I think the key thing to mention here, really, is that this third column weighting, so essentially how high each criteria is scored if it is met, that comes directly from the community and the community survey that I mentioned earlier. We had a fantastic response to that survey, and that has allowed us essentially to use the community's preferences to determine the priority of the requests that come in. Just very quickly, a couple of these different criteria. So equity, for example, we look to see if the location is within a community development block grant area. If it is, it is assigned roughly a medium weighting to it. Another example is school zone. So is the location within 1,000 feet of an entrance to an elementary or high school? If it is, then it gets a high scoring and gets high points for it. So once all of these requests have been scored, it then goes into an evaluation process that I'll talk about now on the next slide. So this is where we look at each request in a little bit more detail. Knowing the nature of the request, so say if it's speeding, for example, the city would then go out and collect some data. So if it was speeding, they would look at volumes and speeds at that location, and that would go into a site-specific analysis where it's actually determined what the need is at that location. City would then look at countermeasure selection, and ultimately, from this process, you would have a final set of prioritized requests that would move forward for funding and implementation. So I'm going to hand back to Mary now, who will talk about how the community goes about submitting and tracking requests.
Thank you, Ian. Yes, as Ian mentioned, Section 3 of the guide reviews the process of submitting and tracking requests. There will be an interactive online request form available on the city website. This platform will also be used by staff when taking in requests over the phone or through other methods. Requesters will be able to identify the problem location on the map and assign an icon to it, or type in the location, and then place the icon at that location. Then a brief pop-up form will be available for them to fill out. The request form will allow residents to select up to three primary issues from what they want to address, such as speeding, stop sign violations, crossing safety, et cetera. They will also have the ability to choose an other option, which will prompt them to fill out some additional information in the comments box. Once it goes through the prioritization tool, the request will show up on a public-facing, interactive map for residents to track the requests and the priority status. So this is just an example of the public-facing, interactive map and how these different layers can be toggled on and off. You can also use the filter icon to screen out requests by type, year, and by priority. And like a Google map, you can pan to different areas in the city, and you can also type a specific address into the search bar, and it will take you to that location. The next section is the toolbox. And this is the final section we wanted to present to you tonight. And in this section, the guide covers encouragement and engagement, enforcement, and of course, the engineering countermeasures. As noted earlier, community input and involvement was essential in developing the MMTSP. In the encouragement section of the guide, the fact that the community has enormous power to promote and to support street safety is discussed. To that end, the guide contains a number of educational and outreach templates, including examples of lawn signs, car clings, stickers, and magnets. Additional production details will be available on the MMTSP website as the brand and character series continues to evolve. And the idea that everyone has a role and can also be a champion is also covered in this section. The guide notes how several community members contributed above and beyond to the MMTSP development, and we do want to recognize them in particular here: Chad Singleton, Amy Faff, Susan Pointer, and Melanie Stephens. Each champion provided perspective and input into the program, and champions will continue to be a vital part of ensuring that the MMTSP is a success. The guide also recognizes the importance of enforcement and how it is critical to a successful street safety program. And now I will turn it back over to Ian to talk about the countermeasure section.
Thank you, Mary. So the program guide includes a toolbox of countermeasures that the city can use to address specific safety issues. These have been split into two groups. So you have striping signage and marking examples, so things like speed limit signage and high-visibility crossings. And then you have this second group, which are roadway and constructed treatments such as speed humps and traffic circles, and they tend to be a little more expensive to implement and to maintain as well. For each countermeasure, we've created this countermeasure summary sheet, which provides the description of the countermeasure, as well as the advantages and disadvantages, and an effectiveness scorecard as well. And these sheets will be used by the city to determine appropriate countermeasures and can also be used by the community to see what is, what would be effective perhaps on their streets. So this slide shows two examples of the countermeasures that are included in the toolbox: striping and speed humps. Once a location is prioritized for additional analysis, there will be an engineering review and determination of which countermeasures are appropriate, with the intent to implement a progressive application of countermeasures to address a concern and problem. There's an example of this, a resident may call regarding concerns about speeds on their local residential streets. If this location is prioritized through the tool, the engineering team would evaluate it and recommend countermeasures. The city would implement a tiered approach to maximize use of public funds. So for example, by implementing first narrowed lanes through striping improvements, and then continuing to monitor the situation. If the issue persists, additional measures such as speed humps might be recommended. I'm going to turn back to Mary, who will provide the summary of the program and discuss next steps.
Thank you, Ian. And in summary, just to bring it back to the program goals, that this is a comprehensive program that's utilizing the four Es of education, enforcement, engineering, and encouragement; that this is a transparent process that was created with community input; we have a tool that assigns priority rankings based on criteria that the community told us was important; and we have a comprehensive educational guide that explains the program and each of its elements. We have a dynamic toolbox that encourages neighbors and community partners to be engaged champions of safe streets for all modes throughout the city. And I'm going to cover the next steps now. So tonight, we are asking for the City Council's approval of the program. With approval, then we would complete the testing and running of the initial prioritizations, finalizing forms, the website, and the outreach and deployment schedule. As I mentioned earlier, the public launch is planned for the spring in 2021. There is an intention to review requests and projects twice per year, and an annual programming or updating into the annual budget cycle and the CIP, ongoing and continuing education and engagement with the community, and an annual performance report to the City With that, we have the staff recommendation, and if there are any questions or comments.
I have a couple of questions, Mary, and thank you, Mary and Ian, for the presentation. Do I understand the grant just covers the setting up of this program for inputting requests for service?
Right. The grant covered the entire development of the program, and then staff time matched the grant, so we were able to optimize our grant opportunities here. And then when the grant funds are over, the program will be ongoing, and there won't be any funds for implementation. We would have to pursue those.
So that's just for reporting. What about implementation of like countermeasure, counter-traffic measures? Where's that funding going to come from?
So that would have to be determined as part of the budget and CIP program.
Mary, is this similar to like our pavement condition index, where we know the worst roads to the best, and they're all ranked and everything, but we can only tackle 10 streets out of hundreds a year? Are we creating, I know we need to prioritize these things, but are we going to be able to get to them?
So our intention is to prioritize, rank all of the requests, but then only prioritize or put forth the ones that we actually have funding to address, so that when, on the interactive map, when residents go and look and see where their request falls in, they will see whether or not it has been programmed, if it's funded, you know, what the status is. And we recognize that there's only going to be a limited amount of requests that we're going to be able to address each year.
Are these things weighted by the number of complaints? In other words, if we have a neighborhood of like 20 complain about needing a speed bump, but another neighborhood only has one neighbor, does, I mean, is there an algorithm for that?
So there in the tool, there is recognition of whether or not there is more than one complaint. However, if there are more than one complaint from a different address on that same location stretch, you get those points. If there's 20 complaints, you're not going to get any more points. It's just that there are more than one complaint on that particular location.
Got it. Other questions? Comments?
I have a question. The Schaefer.
Go ahead.
So thank you, Mary. Well done, Mary and Ian, on this program. How many requests do you, are received in a year typically?
I'd have to go back to that, but I think we're in the neighborhood of 100 requests a year right now.
Okay.
Yeah, that's almost exactly 100. That's right.
And you mentioned an interactive map. If somebody lodges a complaint or a concern, they can go into the interactive map and see if their complaint or concern has any resolution, countermeasures, any, if it's been able to be addressed. And understanding that some complaints can be, create a phenomenal amount of money to resolve that issue, so while lots of people complain about it if you don't have the funding to solve it, it's going to continue.
Right. And that's why we recognize that there's, there are multiple layers to, you know, improving street safety, and certainly, you know, investment in infrastructure is one very important layer, but there are also the layers of enforcement and community engagement and, you know, advocacy for safety in your own neighborhood. So there's, we recognize that this is a multifaceted program.
Well done, Mary. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. So thanks, Mary, and thank you, Ian. I can tell that a lot of effort and hard work has gone into this program. My question has to do with the funding, that this is, as I understand it, that the input from the public will be accumulated throughout a budget year and then tied into the following budget. Is that correct? You'll take what the budget allows and then work on however many high-priority projects you can?
Right. The other benefit to this program, besides the, you know, programming, limited dollars in a, you know, transparent, equitable way, the other benefit is that with this adopted program, we may be able to pursue or leverage other funding opportunities that come about, such as safe routes to school, you know, where you can use some of these other state and regional dollars on at least collectors.
Right.
So it gives us that opportunity to access those funding sources.
Okay. Does it make it, does it give us the opportunity to more easily access those funding opportunities? Because they've been there all along, or are they looking for programs such as this that does lay out prioritization?
They are looking for prioritization, absolutely. They're looking for plans, prioritization, and then they have their, you know, every program has specific conditions that they need to meet.
Okay. And then, does this program reset every year? I mean, do the data within it, does it reset every year for each budget year, or is it cumulative? Or is it dynamic, where I could have a street be in fourth place this week, but based on the input, ongoing, it could be in 11th place the following week?
Once it's ranked, it's ranked. That it's, the ranking doesn't change. It's just where, you know, how are we able to invest at limited resources wherever it ranks? And then obviously, when it's done, you know, it comes off the list, and then we also will be contacting any requests that are over five years old to make sure that they're still valid, they're still interested, they're still in issue.
Okay. So then, back to my question about being tied to a budget year, what happens to the streets that are not selected within a budget year to be worked on? Do they just stay in the mix?
Yes.
Okay, but they could potentially change their position based on any new, and new streets that are, that enter into the program?
Right, new, they don't change their rank, but they will change, uh, correct, yes, they could, the position of prioritization could change, right.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Questions, Portia?
No, everyone asked them.
Brett, you got anything?
Nope.
If there's no other questions or comments, I think a motion would be in order.
I'll move that we adopt the multimodal transportation safety program.
So that's a motion from Brett, who else did I hear?
Schaefer, second.
Okay, Tim, second. Um, with that, we'll take a roll call in.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Okay, with that, on to item twenty.
Next item is item nineteen, the subject is Adopt Carriage Drive Laupi Lane Safe Schools Corridor Plan. The recommendation is to adopt, uh, a resolution adopting the Carriage Drive Laupi Lane Safe Schools Corridor Plan.
Sorry, I tried skipping this item.
Good evening, Mayor Miller and council members, I'm Leslie Blumquist with the General Services Department, and I'm here with Mary Poole, um, from the previous item regarding the city's, uh, Carriage Drive and Laupi Lane Safe Schools Corridor Plan. Citrus Heights has a history of commitment to improving traffic safety for all users. Many plans have been created and adopted since incorporation. Among these, in two thousand and eleven, the city adopted the general plan update, and in two thousand and fourteen, completed the school walkability master plan report. Goal twenty-nine of the general plan is to plan, design, construct, and manage a complete streets transportation network that accommodates all needs of mobility types, users, and ability levels. And policy twenty-nine point four is to support safe, complete, and well-connected neighborhood street, bicycle, and pedestrian access, and to balance circulation needs within the neighborhood context. The two thousand and fourteen School Walkability Plan Report lists universal recommendations near schools throughout the city, and also discusses site-specific corridor recommendations on the Carriage Laupi Corridor. In two thousand and eighteen, we were awarded a Sustainable Communities Grant from Caltrans to develop this plan, also utilizing staff time as the match, there's no cash match for this. The map on the screen shows the limits of the study, which includes Carriage Drive and Laupi Lane from Antelope to Auburn, and it also includes the portion of Auburn between Carriage and Sylvan Corners. The plan also included evaluating circulation at each of the three schools on the corridor, which are Carriage Drive Elementary, Mesa Verde High School, and Sylvan Middle School. This plan development originated after years of concerns from parents and residents alike regarding the safety and operations on the Carriage Laupi Corridor. Prior to the current pandemic and distance learning, there were over twenty-two hundred students that attended school each day at one of these three schools. The majority of students arrived by car, and there was also a general increase in the number of people traveling on the corridor. Due to the high volume and use, we heard concerns regarding vehicle speeds, student behavior, crossing locations, and then also the challenges entering and exiting the school campuses themselves. We used a variety of data to support the approach and concept development. This slide lists out the main types of data that was used, which included the three years of crash data, roadway traffic data counts, all collected pre-COVID, five years of resident calls and concerns that we had in our database, stakeholder interviews, as well as a robust community engagement effort. In order to understand the full nature and extent of the concerns and experiences on Carriage Drive and Laupi Lane, we hosted over twelve separate outreach events. All written engagement information was available in three languages, English, Spanish, and Russian, including the flyers, as well as all of the online surveys, both of the online surveys. Um, translation was also available for all of the in-person events. After development of the concepts, uh, we reached back out to the community to gather feedback on the various proposals and alternatives. In total, we heard from over three hundred and thirty members of the community. The highest concerns we heard included pedestrian safety, residential access, and school parking lot access. However, we also heard a substantial amount of concerns regarding bicycle safety and then circulation within the campuses themselves. Based on the information and feedback we received, the planned vision was created. The vision is a corridor where students of all ages, families, and neighborhood residents can access their destinations in a safe and comfortable manner, however they choose to travel. And with that vision, three specific goals were developed, to maximize safety for students and families traveling to school, to ensure all people are comfortable while traveling, whether they walk, bike, scoot, or skate, or drive, and then to provide access to all neighborhood destinations for both school attendees and local residents. On the roadway corridor, several general improvements are recommended, including vertical curbs, which provide protection between the parking lane and the sidewalks, and prevent vehicles from driving up onto the curb. They also more clearly define driveway limits, making access in and out of private residential homes more consistent. Green conflict markings make it clear where bicycles and vehicles share a space on the road. And a wider sidewalk on Auburn would provide additional room for pedestrians and ability to better accommodate the surge in pedestrians leaving at the end of the school day. High-visibility crosswalks make crossing locations more visible to the driver. Herb extensions extend the sidewalk into the parking lane, reduce the speed of turning cars, increase sight distance for pedestrians. They also allow additional space for pedestrians as they wait to cross, and they reduce the distance of where the pedestrian's actually crossing the road. And speed humps, when strategically placed, can reduce overall vehicle speeds. A rectangular rapid flashing beacon, um, as shown here on the left side of the slide, is proposed at the crosswalk at Midnight Way. This is the uncontrolled crossing where the kitty walk exits from Sylvan Middle School to Carriage Drive. Uh, a rectangular rapid flashing beacon is the bright yellow light, and it flashes at an irregular pattern. Um, it starts when a pedestrian pushes a button, and they've been shown to increase driver, um, yield compliance due to that irregular flash. It's not a steady flash, it kind of is random and catches the eye more easily. Circular intersections are proposed at both the Carriage and Canai and Carriage and Pratt intersections. The term circular intersections includes both traffic circles and roundabouts, and they've been shown to regulate traffic through intersections, reduce vehicle speeds, allow for safe and predictable U-turns, and reduce crash risk. And a raised roadway is proposed on the portion of Laupi that bends to the east at the location of the rear entrance to Mesa Verde High School, which is essentially a large raised crosswalk. It'll require drivers to slow down, drive up and over the raised area, and then back down. The preferred roadway concept for the portion of Laupi between Antelope and Pratt includes installation of a shared-use path on the west side of the road, which will accommodate both pedestrians and bicycles. This will provide a low-stress off-street facility for people to walk and bike while also minimizing vehicle conflicts. In the interim, until the shared-use path can be installed, it is recommended to install on-street bike lanes. The preferred alternative on Carriage Drive is to slightly widen the bike lanes and narrow the travel lanes. This alternative, when combined with the, uh, recommendations previously discussed, will reduce vehicular speeds and increase safety for bicyclists while still maintaining parking on both sides of the road. And now to discuss the internal school recommendations. This plan was developed in coordination with the school district, and evaluated and looked at the onsite, um, layout and circulation of the parking lots. These recommendations were recently presented to the School District Facilities Committee, who voted to recommend to the school board the continued partnership between district and city for implementation of these improvements.
Question, uh, while we're on this slide. This would involve moving the entrance to align with Pratt Avenue?
Correct.
Uh, we tried that, poof, five years ago, and the s- the school pitched a fit about taking up their play area.
Yeah, we've had conversations with them, and I think the change in the coordination between the schools is slightly different, and the principal has changed at the school, and they are more open to the idea now.
Okay, that's good to hear. Thank you.
So this relocation, uh, at Pratt would reduce the left-turn conflicts where the driveway is currently just southerly of the intersection, and then would result in overall, um, less congestion in front of the school, and then would also, uh, increase parking in the lot itself, should the school choose to do so. At Carriage and Canai, a circular intersection is proposed. With this alternative, the northern driveway entrance to, uh, the parking lot from Carriage would be closed to vehicles, and it would be used by buses only. With the closure of this driveway to parents and vehicles, drivers wishing to enter the parking lot, uh, would enter from Canai, turn right into the parking lot at the first entrance, circle around, and then exit via another circular intersection closer to the high school. The benefits of this include the reduced driveway conflicts on Carriage, the improved pedestrian visibility at the primary exit driveway, and the ability to better accommodate the surge in vehicles. And they would also provide a longer queue, so it would really help to get cars off of Carriage and onsite, um, allowing them to stack up longer distances before they spill out onto the adjacent road. Another item we heard a lot about during the public engagement portion of the plan development was the desire for crossing guards along this corridor and throughout the city as a whole. As a part of the plan development, we performed a variety of research on successful crossing guard programs throughout the state. Appendix D to the report includes a summary of that research and information on the different programs, such as the jurisdiction, the funding sources that are used for them, the approximate program cost, and then who manages the project, whether it's the school district, the city, or another entity. So this table is just included for future reference, should the city wish to visit, um, or discuss the feasibility of crossing guards in the future. This plan, uh, developed a preferred design concept only, and determined the feasibility of converting the corridor into a safe schools corridor, and it includes concept-level designs and estimates only. If adopted, the plan would be used to seek grant funds to continue design work, perform the environmental review, and then to construct the improvements. Her CEQA guideline one-five-two-six-two feasibility studies are not subject to environmental review. And that concludes the presentation. The motion for your consideration tonight is to adopt the plan and find that the plan is statutorily exempt from CEQA, and I am available for any questions.
Hearing that, are there questions or comments? I see Genie queuing up.
Uh, no, you don't, but, uh, comment to say thank you, Leslie. Very well done, appreciate it.
I have one thing, yeah, one thing, yeah, Leslie, can you go back to the Mesa Verde, uh, option or entrance? Okay, so Carriage and Canai was when, is where you're talking about putting a traffic circle in?
Yeah, probably, um, like a small roundabout, most likely.
And, um, would it be that the, uh, control on that intersection would be yield signs and not stop signs?
Correct, yes. I do see a little error on our, I think they would be yield control on all four approaches.
Okay, um, as a parent who took their son to Mesa Verde High School, you know, literally every day, I think, uh, for four years, um, that's a horrible intersection, and I like roundabouts, but I'm really trying to visualize how that's going to make that better. And the problem there isn't the, the vehicle traffic, it's the pedestrian traffic and how it impacts the vehicle traffic, because then the vehicle traffic has to wait for the pedestrians. So, um, um, I don't know, I don't know, um. Hopefully that would work, but, uh, that's just a horrible intersection, uh, in the, at the beginning of school. I'm really glad to see the idea about, of entering Carriage on the other end, uh, that, that's wonderful. I wish there was an option with this property to do something like that for the high school, but there isn't really. That's it.
You know, this is Genie, Brett brings up a, a, a good, um, thought, you know, so, I thought, to my mind is, I love roundabouts too, but I remember putting one in on Woodmore Oaks and then having to take it out again. I still think the problems are the ball-balls, not the roundabout, but that's history. I just want to make sure we've got enough room, enough area for the roundabout to really be, um, well-designed and, and promote traffic flow, and not run into a situation again where we end up not having adequate space for people to get through it without hitting their tires, their bumpers, and all the things that went on in Woodmore Oaks.
That's a really great point. If we did pursue a circular intersection here, we would need to work with the school district and likely, um, it would have to push a little bit westerly into the entrance, and so we have to work with them on the right-of-way limits there and making that work, making sure that we do have a good design.
That looks just really tight, you know?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we've talked to the school district about that, and preliminarily, they are willing to work with us on that, um, just due to the overall congestion on the corridor.
Right, okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Tim, Portia?
Not for me, thank you.
So, um, I then move, if we have none of this, move that we adopt a resolution supporting, um, this item for the, the local lane, safe schools, oh, Carriage Drive Local Lane Safe Schools Corridor Plan.
I second. To Schaefer.
Motion by Bruins, second by Schaefer. Roll call, please, Amy.
Councilmember Bruins.
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels.
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton.
Aye.
And Mayor Miller.
Yes. Now I think we can go to item twenty, right?
Yes, item twenty, the subject is Discussion Concerning Discontinuing Participation in the Great Plates Delivered Program.
I have to find the unmute button. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers, Chris Myers, General Services Department. Um, I preface this with saying that this is certainly not a discussion that we anticipated having with council. Uh, we really didn't expect this program to continue as long as it has. Uh, this month will be seven months for us. Uh, the Great Plates Program is funded by Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA and administered by Office of CALOE S. Uh, by the time that we reach December thirty-first, we will have fully invested two-point-four million dollars into the program. Uh, we were continuing with, um, six restaurants and maintaining a weekly, um, invoicing of about eighty, eighty thousand dollars. So that's where we are with that. Um, we have, uh, been reimbursed three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Or excuse me, three hundred and eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five, and we are awaiting, uh, substantial amount with that. Based upon the current, uh, information that we are getting from FEMA, since we already have invoicing in the queue for five months, and the backlog that they have with the fire damage in the state of California, we're looking at a good twelve months before full reimbursement for this project. Since we are floating this upfront and using general fund cash reserves, it just isn't something that we can continue to float, um, in anticipation of being reimbursed at a, within twelve-month period of time. So, uh, staff is requesting that council approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to discontinue our participation in the Great Plates Program effectively December thirty-first of two thousand and twenty. The program is currently funded for approval, uh, to January seventh. It is renewed in increments of thirty-day periods, and generally, staff are not given that information, or FEMA has not approved the extensions until two to three days prior to the end date. Um, some additional background information to date, because we do two weekly data reports to FEMA CALOE S. because we do two weekly data reports to FEMA Cal OES. So today, we are at 97,900 meals that we've provided, 3,500 meals a week, plus or minus, and we are currently now at about 169 participants a week. Each restaurant is provided with a list that we rotate through because we have multiple of the six restaurants. You've got sandwiches and Mexican food, so we try to break that out, so we've had happy people. But you have restaurants with 30 participants that are providing 90 meals a day and delivering that. So that's where all of that expense comes from. But we feel that we can wrap this up effectively and provide the information that we need to help the residents that have been on the program, and then also wind down for the restaurants as well by December 31st.
Thank you, Chris. You know, you said we didn't expect it to last this long, and of course, we didn't expect the pandemic to last this long. But the fact that FEMA isn't paying us with our current fiscal situation, I don't think we can front any more money. So my recommendation, unless anybody has another idea, would be to make a motion to pull item 21 from the agenda. It's up to the council. Comments, questions, motion?
Wait a second, Steve. I don't understand what you're doing.
The next item was item 13, now it's item 21, Great Plates Delivered contract amendments, and we would just not move forward with that. That's my recommendation.
I just want to comment that I am highly disappointed with the action before us tonight. I did not know that we weren't getting paid. And FEMA is saying it's because of buyers that they can't pay us? Because are they short of funds? Or, Chris?
Chris? We don't know if they're short of funds, Jeannie, but the information that we're getting from our FEMA administrators is that this is the expectation, and you will not get your money upfront. We have weekly call-in meetings with Cal OES and FEMA representatives every Wednesday at noon, and as of this Wednesday, we dropped down to only 14 participants on the call. So you have a lot of agencies now that are deciding that this is no longer sustainable. The city of Roseville is also exiting the program December 31st as well because they have allocated and used all the additional funding that they had to do so. So they need to pull out as well because everyone has now come to the conclusion that, yes, you've got your invoices in, and that's great, but it's not going to happen. And on the back end of that, there is also a 10% retention that will be retained by FEMA until the program is completely closed.
Very disappointed with the feds on this one. So I agree that we cannot continue to fund something for which we were supposed to be reimbursed readily, but it just has been, it's been such a boon to help keep some of our restaurants going as well as provide services for seniors that don't qualify for other programs. So do I understand you to say that you are looking for other ways to provide food for these seniors?
There are some, yes. We've gotten some contacts from some other groups of people within the county and regionally that are looking at how to address this because they know that this program is going to come to an end. So we will go through and work with some people. I mean, there's a lot of people that apply for this. You know, we've had over 800 people apply. The criteria has been very strict based upon their incomes and their households and all of that. So there have been about 800 people. You know, we only have 100 and some people right now, weekly, and we have directed people to either the Fresh Choices thing or to Meals on Wheels because they don't fall within that category. So there are some options, and we will certainly do what we can to help bridge that for folks.
Well, I equally, if not even more concerned about the impact this is going to have on the restaurants that we've been able to assist to stay open. And I don't see that we have a choice other than to do this, but I just say if this passes council tonight, just put a plea out to the community to step up your efforts to support these restaurants. You know, do the takeout, do the curbside takeout, whatever it takes to help them stay open. Thank you. Let's go on to Steve before we pull 21, okay?
Yeah, oh, yeah, no, that's what I'm asking is a motion to consider pulling it, not...
Well, I...
Where do you want to hear it?
Let's get past 20 first before we act on whether we pull 20. If we...
Oh, I get you.
If we pull 20, then yes, we should pull 21.
I have a question for Chris.
Well, I will make a motion to discontinue the participation in the Great Plates Delivered Program.
Is there a second, or is this just informational only?
Yeah, this is, I think, wait, you know what? You're right, this is only an informational item.
Okay.
All right, so scratch my idea, scratch the motion, and let's move on to the next item.
Actually, Mayor, there was a resolution that was provided for item 20 for the council's consideration, and here is the title of the resolution.
Thank you, I didn't see it.
I see it in the update.
Can I ask Chris a question, please?
Sure.
Chris, going back to that, the money side of it, there's a whole lot of different numbers being thrown around. Ultimately, we would be looking at being reimbursed, correct?
Correct.
And are you able to tell me, and forgive me for asking it down to this level, but are you able to tell me how much we are having to front, for lack of a better word, on a weekly basis?
Yes, because if you take out, so our, sorry, other page. Our local match is $153,125, but we will be, we are fronting, we're floating the whole minus that for the $2.4 million. And if you take out, just take out $400,000 because it's $385,725 that we've been paid. So the rest of that, we're floating.
And then, I know it would be difficult to give an exact number, but do you have any approximate number, what that comes down to on a weekly basis right now?
Oh, for restaurants?
Whatever we're having to float out there. Are we paying them weekly?
We're floating out about $80,000 a week.
A week, and we're paying them weekly?
And we're paying them weekly and timely because restaurants only, you know, they, that they're hand-to-mouth.
And was there any discussion with these restaurants that if this program goes away or if there is a desire on any of their parts to possibly delay payment to them from us so that they can continue to have a business? And obviously, they're going to be tremendously negatively impacted if we shut this down, compounded by the shutdown that happens at midnight tonight. Any desire or any discussion of a desire on their part to hold off on payment for us, from us?
A year? Brett?
What's that?
Are you suggesting that they wait a year?
Oh, no, 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 not at all, not at all. But there might be some, there might be some other point as far as whether this goes on for a few more weeks. You know, I mean, the timing's horrible compared, you know, with the level of, you know, virus infections right now. It's, you know, ultimately at the highest level, which means there are going to be a whole lot more people that are going to need this kind of a thing, number one. And then, again, shutting down our restaurants to even outdoor dining right at all at the same time is going to have an even greater negative impact on our restaurants. And so I'm just wondering if maybe they have, if any of them had the ability to wait for the next couple of weeks, three weeks, I don't know. Just wondering if there's some sort of maybe middle ground or even, you know, somewhere else in the chart where they might want to continue the program without expecting to get paid immediately on a weekly basis.
I think it would be unfair to put the restaurants in a position to further put themselves at a deficit.
Well, we don't know what their, we don't know what their bank accounts allow them to do, and it would be really unfair when they don't have any business.
I understand your point. However, seeing that we don't know as a city when we're going to be able to make these timely payments and looking at our own budget, we have to be responsible with this. And it doesn't make sense to continue on, and we don't have any idea of when we're going to get these payments from FEMA. As Chris was saying, it could be up to 12 months. It's a long wait.
Well, they said it would be 12 months. You know, Brett, just to carry your thought forward and give some more discussion, what would it, what would it gain them? A couple of more weeks, another month? To me, that's, if I felt that it was enough to bridge the gap and then monies would start to flow into us that we could flow over to them, but we're talking about 12 months. And there's, you know, it seems like it's just kicking the can down the road. It's going to be a hard thing to do, no matter when we do it, so.
Yeah, absolutely. It was just a thought of, you know, do they have a desire to do it? And, you know, if we haven't discussed it with them, then, you know, I guess there's no way to know that.
Are they aware that we're facing this?
They are aware of what they can be aware of because we go through this every month. For example, the last time that I came to you for a contract extension, we had two restaurants that had run out of funds. So they were out of the program for two weeks. So that is always going on. They have only brought on extra help when they knew that they had the 30 people to provide 90 meals for. So what that's going to do to their regular daily business, I do not know that, but I can say, for example, for the NorCal subs, they do all of their food prep out of their closed Subway shop in the mall. So they have been using that as their home base to prep all of the sandwiches that they have made to have delivered for our program. So they'll just, they will obviously wind that back down. It won't affect their other establishment.
Okay.
But every month, they know because we will get, we will get calls from, you know, our Vita Canteen, and they will say, you know, "What does it look like? We haven't heard yet." They say, "Well, if it ends, it ends. If it's not, if we can continue, that's great." So there's an expectation that they know that it's gone on longer than everybody had originally expected it to do.
Right, right. So they got, they actually got more than they expected to get when we started the program.
Correct, correct.
Right, I guess the sense that eases the pain a little bit, it's just painful.
Well, this is hard. But a majority of our residents said they don't want us spending any more money. We're bleeding money, and we need to start making cuts, and this is tough. These are hard choices. So, you know, if the measure passed, I think we could probably feel comfortable fronting the money. But we're in a position where I don't think we have the need to do this, so. I will make a motion to discontinue the program.
I second.
As tough as it is. Thank you, Tim. Second by Schaefer. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bruins?
Aye.
Councilmember Daniels?
Aye.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
And Mayor Miller?
Aye.
We're going to be pulling 21 because it's an issue, right?
Right, do we need a motion to do that now?
You can take a motion, but really, it's moot. You could just move on to the next item.
We're not going to act on it. So with that, next item, please, Amy?
The next item is department reports, and there are none. Next item is city manager items, which we heard at the beginning, unless there's any additional comments. The next item is items requested by council members and future agenda items.
I just wanted to give a heads up, especially to Councilmember Schaefer. I'll be sending out a list of council regional board assignments and asking you to rank your preferences. I'll try and be as fair and equal as doling out the assignments for regional boards. There'll be, usually, we turn them towards the end of December. There'll be a deadline. Please get those back to me because I'll be making the appointments in January.
Thank you, Mayor.
And welcome aboard, Tim.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I have one item very quickly. I was a little remiss earlier. I wanted to wish those of our friends in the Jewish community a happy Hanukkah. That started today, I believe. And then I would like us to think about possibly officially supporting the effort that Supervisor Frost is involved in with the effort to change the criteria on COVID restrictions to ZIP code-based efforts as opposed to county and/or regional efforts. I don't know where that's going. I don't know that it can go anywhere necessarily, but it certainly is much more applicable to Citrus Heights. Again, we wouldn't be shut down if we were in a ZIP code-based criteria. So I was just wondering if anybody on the council cares to or if it would be required in that sense to look into and/or support that effort.
I'd like to have a discussion with our supervisor. I haven't talked to her about it yet.
I definitely would need more details.
You know, something I could potentially support, but I'd like to talk to her first. I will do.
I'd support that, moving to a ZIP code categorization for COVID.
Now, that's not really within our purview to do that. We'd have to convince the state.
It's basically supporting her effort to see it happen.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right, we can't act on her own, but like signing a petition.
Well, let's leave it at that. We have two, and if I hear from a third, I will go ahead and... I would, what do others think, writing a letter in support? Or is this something you want to agendize, Brett?
Oh, I think just a letter of support would be great. I think, if my memory is correct, the city of Folsom has jumped on board and just showing a stronger support for that type of classification.
Let's take a look at it, and if it looks something that's got traction, is doable, or I hear from Jeannie or Portia, we'll go ahead and agendize something.
I'll just write the letter.
Yeah, well, if you're okay with that, Chris?
We can't have the discussion here. We're kind of talking about whether you want to have the letter or not. Really, the question is, is there support to come back and have a...
With a letter.
All right, well, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, I'm going to adjourn the meeting.
I am.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night, drive safe.